Well, thank you everyone for showing up. I appreciate it. All right, well, it is seven thirty. I'm calling the meeting of our regular meeting of Roxbury Land and Commission to order. And I would start with roll call identification of members, and I don't care which order we go in. So Bob, why don't you start?
Okay, Bob Munson, Vice Chair.
Deidre Daly, Secretary. Pauline Krosick, Member. Chris Cody, Alternate.
Peter Fios, Chair.
Peter Mariano, Member.
Okay. Okay, for a new business, we'll, we'll take, oh, wait a minute, we have to approve our minutes. I'm sorry. This whole unmuting and muting kind of confused the heck out of me, so. Yeah, I apologize. Okay. Approve of minutes. Do all of you have the minutes and did you have a chance to read them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so ordered. The minutes are approved. Okay. We got, get around with the new business and the first item on the agenda is a lot line revision and an exchange of conservation area on the Brownson Mountain subdivision, which involves three lots all owned by the applicant, Dr. Kleiner. And what he's trying to accomplish is two things. If we have, have you seen the map? Can you, you have the map before you? Have you looked at that? Or can you see the map?
Yeah. I have, I have looked at the map. I don't have a map in front of me, but it's, I have looked at it and, and.
Well, what it, what it involves is there's three lots that actually at the end of the cul-de-sac or the turnaround of Brownson Mountain subdivision, all owned by Dr. Kleiner. He also purchased a additional property adjacent to his lots for thirty-three point nine acres. What he's trying to accomplish is to remove sections of the conservation area that border the, oh, here we go, that border the, the large area that he purchased and replace it with an equal amount of conservation area on the remaining lots or the other lots that he owns. If you look at the map, it's very hard to see on the, on the map that you have on screen right now. But it's a section. It's too bad that we can't see that map any better, but can, can you see? Whoop, what happened to the map?
Julie, is it possible for Peter to use the mouse on that map to, as a pointer per se? Was I heard there?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? No, Peter, Peter can't. Peter has to be sharing in order and it's, it's my share unfortunately. So I'm trying to get you a better view.
Whoop, 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 that's it. That's good. I think, can you see it? Can you see it all now? Yeah, I can, I can point out as to what we're doing. The area to be removed is an area on lot number, I have my big map right in front of me, on lot number three and on lot number four. And that is the hash marked area. That's, that is the one, the area that's right bordering the adjacent property of thirty-three point nine acres that Dr. Kleiner had purchased. That will be replaced, those two areas to be removed will be replaced by the areas that are marked in red and they have hash marks on it. Which, which you would see on a lot number four, two and three. And all owned by Dr. Kleiner, of course. And you see that the, that red area is the replacement area of the, of the area removing, and it's an equal area. That's number one. Number two, we're, the application calls for, asks for a lot line revision, which is indicated on lot number four. We're removing the lot line. You can see the lot line where it was, the original lot line?
Yeah.
And it gets moved up to the the heavy coated or the heavy colored, red lot line, which will replace that lot line. So we have lot line revision in essence. Okay, so that's all we're doing. The the conservation area has been replaced, that we're removing is replaced with, with an equal amount. And, and all property that's, that is taking place in is all owned by the same applicant, by the applicant. So there are no issues in terms of. I'm sorry?
Yes, you're welcome.
Oh. So in any event, are there any questions or any thoughts, any reasons why, why you have concerns about that issue?
No.
If there are no other concerns and issues, then I would like to get a motion on approving the lot line revision on lot number four and the replacement of all the indicated area of the conservation area with the indicated area on the remaining lots with an equal amount.
I'll make the motion to approve the lot line revision as is and the swapping of the conservation areas.
A second.
Deidre, Deidre, a second?
I said, yeah, I seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so ordered. Okay, we got that done. Yeah. The next item on the agenda is Howard and Kathleen Bronson, and welcome to our meeting. And what we're trying to accomplish here is what we're trying to accomplish with this situation is the, the original, there's one piece of property that was originally the size of let's see, eighteen point nine four two acres. And, and what we're doing is we're adding, we actually, this originally was applied for as a subdivision. But after reviewing the lot lines as they are.
And frozen.
I'm sorry? Okay, so what's happening is that we're, we're simply, we're simply adding. I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Excuse me one moment, please.
There, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have the map on, on screen now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I had some disturbance in the background, so I just took care of that. Okay, so if you can see, what has happened is that the, the original lot, one area that the entire property was nineteen, I'm sorry, let me just go by my map, eighteen point nine four acres. What, what's happening is that we removed, we added, or we actually shifted a lot line. Where we're taking an additional four point nine acres with, with the house, adding it to the house lot, that leaving fourteen point one acres, oh, one acres, which will be conveyed to the land trust, Roxbury Land Trust. So essentially, it's not a subdivision in terms of creating additional lots or creating lots to, to build on. And for that reason, that was my, my analysis, that this is really nothing more than just shifting a lot line to add property to the house lot and have the remaining property be conveyed to the land trust, which is also boarded by property owned by the town of Roxbury. So it is, it is not a subdivision per se, but simply a, a lot line addition or a lot line revision. Are you, are you all this together?
I just, I guess I would just like to, you're probably wondering a little bit about what's happened with the, the little bit of history there and with the farm. And what I'd just like to share is that my parent, when Howie and I came and bought the farm from my parents and they built their house there and had the acreage there, that my parents, as strongly as we feel about the community, they wanted to have this happen with that property that would be a house with the XXI acreage going to the Roxbury Land Trust. And I'm just happy to report as of just a few weeks ago, that the farm now, the Maple Bank Farm will, is preserved as a farm forever. And so it is, I'm gonna try not to get too emotional about this, but so now it is just, that's a long side.
And so these two properties will be, have conservation easements on them, and they connect to the town of Roxbury where the transfer station is, or could be trails up through there to connect to Lower County at some time.
Right. All, all the properties are now contiguous and that, you know, again, that's why I felt that it's not a subdivision application, but rather a shifting of a lot line to add their property to the, who have a total property with the house that's four point nine three two acres. And the rest of it's going to be conveyed to the land trust. I, I didn't, I hope the, well, actually, I'm asking the commission if there are any thoughts about, if you're feeling differently about that, than, than my analysis was when I looked at the, the map and the application.
No, I, Peter, you're, you're right with that, and also we should, as a commission, we could get, we should be run out of town if we were not to allow the Bronsons.
Absolutely. And that, actually, that was my first thought when I first looked at it.
It's hard.
That, that motivated, that motivated me right away. As soon as I saw that. All right, well, then.
I'll make the motion to approve this.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Very, very good. Well, thank you very much.
Good deal.
Mrs. Bronson, I appreciate it. And all the best to you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks, Howie.
Thank you, and I just wanna, I just wanna let you know, I'll call all my, my brothers and sisters. I have seven. Thank you very much.
You bet.
You will.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Bye.
Okay. That brings us to the final new business of the day. And that is a referral from the zoning commission of a text amendment. And have you had a chance to read that? That was, that was submitted with the package.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
I, I have read it, and the, the one thing, if I could say that I thought was weird, or just was curious, it says, "The non-conforming space shall be left unchanged while the"
What does that mean?
"conforming section could become habitable space or, you know, other permissible uses." So where is that, like, am I understanding that right, Peter? That the portion that's non-conforming has to be left as it is? And then the other half of it, what is, what is conforming, can be used as habitable space?
That's how I read it. I, I think it's, it just means what it says, I suppose. And I know it's kind of strange, but I really can't add any more to it than what it, what it reads. I'm, you know, I read the same thing and it was, so in essence,
What if that side isn't, what if that side isn't disrepair? Like, you can't have one side in disrepair and then you're gonna put habitable space. I guess you could put habitable space against it, but why would you? It's just weird wording. If they're asking us to read, to read it, then it's, that.
Well, so, well, the non-conforming, I'm not quite sure what non-conforming area actually means, very frankly. Does it mean that is, that it's, that you cannot repair a building that's not in good repair? On a non-conforming area? And then what divides the non-conforming and the conforming area? That's a question that I would have. Bob, can you kind of shed some light on that?
Um, I don't know, if I had to pick something, I would think, if you take the barn, for example, that's on the corner of Topit Road and Painter Hill. Who's, that Irish author owns it, or his family owns it. And that big barn there sits right on the road. And I, my feeling is that what they want to make sure is that, you know, that you don't change the, the looks from the outside, but the inside was originally a barn and it's gonna be converted into habitable space. Because it doesn't meet the setback, I don't think you could convert it, you know, under the old regulations. And now, I mean, if I'm reading it correctly, it's, it's saying that, you know, the inside can become habitable space, but the exterior has to remain looking the same as it is. You can still repair it, but, you know, if it's vertical siding, you can't go and put cedar shakes on or, or whatever, or, or, you know, I would also think that, you know, if it's a flat sidewall, you can't go and put a big picture window in. But, but, you know, there's not enough description to tell you.
But I, actually, there's one, one thing that, you know, the section that is not conforming and a section is conforming. In other words, if you have a barn sitting in an area, yeah, where a portion of the barn is in a setback area, and it's not, it's not setback far enough. So let's, let's say the barn, ten feet of the barn is in the, in a setback area. And the other ten feet are conforming then. So you could, you could only actually renovate the conforming area of that barn. That is not, there's not in, encroaching on the setback area as, as living space. Isn't that, Peter, is that what you, what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, to simplify or try to explain it, like, Peter, is this what you, right? This is what you're seeing, so?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying is that, you know, if, if you have a barn that's just tied up against the, the road line and a portion of the barn encroaches on the setback area, then that portion of the barn that encroaches on the setback area cannot be utilized for habitable space. Bob, is that, does that make sense to you?
No, I don't, I don't think it's, I think it can be used as habitable space. I just don't think you can alter it or change it.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'm not, not sure. You know, it's really not very clear. And, you know, the five point two point one is even less clear to me.
Well, what, what it says is excluding side and rear setbacks. That's excluded. So.
Yeah, if we're having, if we're having problems understanding it, I think it has to, should be clarified.
And my question would be, if you have a barn that's right on the road, quite frankly, it's a hazard. So what if somebody has a barn that's right on the road and they want to take ten feet of the barn off, close it up, and then use the rest of it? They would be changing the part that's on the road, which is no longer safe and probably, I mean, it, it would be a road hazard and it's also probably in disrepair at this point. This regulation doesn't allow them to reduce the size of the barn so that it is now in a setback, if they want to still use it as a barn. It, it, I mean, it doesn't make sense why they wouldn't want it changed. I could see them not wanting to put regular windows or a front door on it.
Yeah, well.
Right?
I believe that's why it makes reference to the fact that it's excluding side and rear setbacks. So the side, the side and rear setbacks are not affected by where the fronts, the front setbacks are, because that's what, that's what faces the road. So I'd like to point out to you that this, this is going to go to a public hearing on November the ninth to go into address this particular text amendment and change. So at that point, I think it's going to be clarified. They're gonna be talked, they're gonna talk about it. I mean, I, I personally have a little tough time, the same as Peter has, to really understand what what conforming, non-conforming area means of a barn.
Well, maybe we should send it back to them and let them know that we recommend that their text is changed because it's not clear.
Yeah, but the issue with that is that they're going to, we're not going to have another meeting before the before the public hearing that they have on the, what do I say, on the, on the.
Is there any particular barn that this, you think this is applying to in, you know, specifically that, that's why it's?
I would assume the change was made because of an application that was made in reference to a barn. Yeah. I don't know where it is or what it is, but this seems to be something that would actually apply to all barns that are in a situation where they're, where they're actually encroaching on the, on the setback lines. And, and you could only use the area in that barn to make it habitable that is outside of the required setback.
Yeah.
That's what it reads to me. And then, then you have the, the sideline, the sidelines and the rear lines of, of that barn is not affected by the restrictions that you have to the non-conforming area. So as, as Bob was saying, that essentially what that seems to me is that you could, you can't, you can't change the front of the, the building. And, and the side, sidelines of, of the building that is encroaching on the setback area. But you can, in fact, make it habitable with a section that's not in the set, in the setback line, a setback area, and you could put windows in there and you could actually, you know, change the looks of it. That's how it appears to me.
Yeah.
And, yeah, again, I don't know, you know, unless we're all comfortable with how, what, what is actually, actually to be understood there. I mean, all we can do is send back to them that the definition needs to be more clearly written to be easily understood.
Yeah.
The front setback is fifty feet? Usually?
But normally, front is, front setback is fifty. Sideline setbacks are thirty, and rear, and rear setbacks are fifty.
That's one heck of a big barn.
Thirty on each side. I'm sorry?
Yeah, that would be one heck of a big barn.
Well, no, I mean, the bottom line is, that if you have a four acre parcel, four acre parcel, and the, and the barn is, sits close to the road and encroaches on the, on the front line, on the front yard setbacks, you know, it's clearly, everything else isn't performing, because you're sitting close to the road and you have a four acre parcel that takes care of, of all the other setbacks. Now, unless it sits in a corner of the building, of the lot, and it's a front line, the front yard setback is encroach upon and the sideline setbacks are encroach upon. So
Yeah.
I mean, it would be a very rare occasion where you have a barn that sits in a corner of a, of a, of a lot where, where this encroaching on front yard and side yard setback. So it's actually the front, the front setback is the, is the one in question here for my, for my.
Julie, can you put up the, the wording?
I can.
The, the one that had the red text. Can you put that up on the screen? We could just look at that and read it once.
My, my copy doesn't show up with the red text. That's my, that's my problem. I don't.
Okay, showed up. I had red text on mine. Just so we can read it and. But yeah, it's, it's, it's strange. I think, Deidre, to your question about why not remove the, the non-conformity? If you're gonna be changing the other part of the barn to make it a habitable space, is I, I know personally from my property in, in Roxbury, my barn was barn, it's not a barn, it's more of a, it was called a carriage house, but that the, they didn't mind the house being very, very old. I could dismantle that, but I wasn't allowed to dismantle barn that had a, that had a stay for a while. So in this case, if my barn was bigger, I would have left the part, it's, as it says, unchanged. And, and it had living space to the backside of it.
Well, here's, here's the new section to be added.
So there's no fifty foot? Yeah, okay, yeah.
It simply says that three point ten point seventeen, "Any non-conforming barn that straddles the front property setback." So that's pretty much what "Excluding side and rear setbacks may have use of the portion of the structure that is located outside of the setback conforming area. The conforming portion will be allowed to be converted into habitable space or other permissible uses. All other applicable regulations shall still apply. A complete site plan along with an affidavit shall be submitted stating that the portion of the structure located inside the setback shall remain unchanged." So that's precisely what we, what we talked about earlier. If you have, if you have barn that sits, portion of it sits in the front yard setback, that portion cannot be changed internally. That has to stay as is. And only the portions outside of that setback can be changed into habitable area. And that's what it says. I, I don't really have a problem with that. It's just, you know, it's, I've been how to do that and how to, how to actually create that kind of a situation. It's, it's gonna be somewhat of a problem. Now, let's, let's go on to the next, the next section, a new section to be added.
Well, hey, Peter?
Yeah.
That, that barn I was talking about, the corner of Painter Hill and Topit. The original owner for Frank McCord's family bought it, was a gal named Ian Rowan. And that barn was right there where it, where there is a barn now and the silo, and I did the renovation for them. This, you know, of course, it was in the setbacks and everything there. We had to go to ZBA and, and apply for, you know, variance. And they gave us a variance for it. So I mean, from my standpoint, that's resolved. Now, when McCord bought it, they moved that whole barn and silo down towards the pond and then built the new barn right where the old barn was. So, and I don't know how that happened. I have no idea how that was permitted, but.
Right. So. Again, I mean, the wording, if you take it verbatim, makes sense. I mean, I can understand what they're talking about. Just practically, I don't know how that's done. How you can take a section of a barn that's in the setbacks and don't touch it and, and change the, the habitable area and into a new design or, or, or make it habitable. You know, so, now, I just want to read that, the other, the definition, barn, the definition of barn, which is also new. "Structures that house livestock, including but not limited to cattle and horses, as well as, as farm equipment and fodder and off, often grain, feed or hay."
Feed or hay, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's a description of barn. Okay, so I, I think that's certainly not a problem to define a barn as such. So I have a problem with that amendment. And then you go on to section five point two point one. And the, which reads originally, "No accessory building shall be built within less than fifty feet of any street or rear property line, nor within less than thirty feet of any side boundary line and adjoining lot," which we talked about earlier. Sidelines, sidelines are thirty, front and rear lots are fifty. And what was added to it, "Unless the interior construction is to be in conjunction with zoning regulations three point ten point one seven," which is the one that, that we are amending, which makes reference to that the section that sits in the setback cannot be touched, but the sections outside of, of the setbacks and is conforming can be renovated for habitable area. So that kind of ties into what they're saying on the, on the other amendments. I mean, it makes sense to me. I can see that. The practicality of it, I'm not quite sure how, how that's gonna work.
I mean, I don't, I don't. I don't know why it's tied into five two one there, because the "No accessory building shall be built," be built, that's building new, that's not renovated. And then, then you go, "Unless the interior construction is to be in conjunction with the zoning regulation." I mean, the two of them are two different things. You know, I mean, interior construction and a addition to be built, they're two entirely different things. So it doesn't make any sense. I mean, to me, this is something, it's, it's a rare occurrence. This isn't something to solve everybody's everyday problem or something. This is a rare occurrence and that's what ZBA is there for. Zoning shouldn't be wasting their time on this crap.
Yeah. Well, you know, Bob, there's one, there's one thing. Let, let's say you have this strange kind of a configuration of a barn. Let's say an L shape. Okay? Where, where you have a section of that L shape is connected to living area, but that section sits in the, in the setback line. So you can continue to use it as a, you know, if that's, if that's the way the barn is laid out. And again, I think that the occasions where that applies to are very rare, that you actually, actually have a situation where a portion of a building sits in a setback.
And, and that, to me, is what ZBA is, is there for, you know? That's my feeling. I mean, this is, this is, to me, like, you know, opening up regulations to all kinds of things that that doesn't need to be. I, you know, I mean, it's, it's not like there's a bunch of barn renovations that have been going on right next to roads for, for years, that we have a problem that has to be dealt with.
Yeah, well, I, like, like I'm saying is, you know, you, you, I mean, if, if you put that into, if, if put into the regulation and the public hearing actually provides a. if you put that into, if they, if put into the regulation and the public hearing actually provides approval to that. I mean, that is.
Do you want?
That will then cover the most unusual, unusual situation that may occur, but nothing, nothing that is, that is normal, I would think.
Peter, I have John here. I don't know if you want him to clarify. He might be able to add some insight. It's up to you.
I think that would be terrific.
All right. Pull up a seat.
Your Highness, how are you?
Hi, John, how you doing? I think, I think, I think we need some explanation of this language here. And if, can, can you shed some light on as to how that originated? Like, you know, we have a little puzzled. You probably heard the whole conversation. So you, you were a little puzzled with the whole thing.
Um, well, I just walked by and, um, Chris caught my eye. So I can give a brief synopsis to what the, uh, regulation attempt is going, what they're trying to do with it. Um, the, most barns back in the day were built right in the road, right next to the roads for convenience factors. Um, obviously our front setback is 50 feet in from the most barn, from the, from the road. The proposal is from that 50 foot setback, any portion of the barn that is in the conforming area of any building lot, they would be able to repurpose that part of the barn. Um, it could be for habitable spaces or a workshop or a, a home office, something along those lines. Um, the reason why they want to, they need to go through the zoning regulations for this and avoid ZBA is ZBA can't approve something that's not a permissible act in the, in our regs. Yeah, kinda get that? I can get a more detailed.
I thought that's what ZBA was for.
Well, ZBA can't, if the town does not approve things, ZBA cannot grant it. You know what I mean? They can do various.
I just cited, I just cited a job where I did that barn. The barn that was on the corner of Painter Hill and Tofit Road.
Okay, yeah, I know the barn. That's one of the Calder barns.
Right. Well, that barn, that barn that's on the corner of that road right now is brand new. The barn that was there was moved down by the pod with the, with the, uh, silo. When I renovated it for the previous owner, it was the barn that was up there on the corner. And then they moved the house and the silo down there and then built the new barn right there. But I, I don't know how that happened, but I know at the, at the time, at the time that I renovated it for the Rowans, again, it was just a, it was a party barn. And then once they wanted to have it as a full-time resident, they had that, you know, then we had to apply to zoning, zoning turned us down. We went to ZBA, ZBA allowed it and boom, we, we did what we had to do.
The pre-existing non-conforming barn can be rebuilt to the exact same specifications as it exists at this time. We're talking about the use of the barn beyond the limited setback guidelines. Uh, you have an 80 foot barn, first 30 feet is non-conforming. The remaining 50 feet would be able to be converted to a
Rec, rec, rec.
Room, um.
Home office.
Yeah, home office, studio and apartment if they so want to. Uh, the remaining non-conforming portion would have to be partitioned off, uh, with an affidavit saying that they cannot encroach on that area, et cetera, et cetera, and make a use that's not permitted.
Well, I don't know why they let me do what we did there 25 years ago.
No, because it was 25 years ago.
And the, the regulations just being changed now. So, I mean, but ZBA signed off on it after zoning, uh, disapproved it.
Well, no, ZBA back then had great authority. The state law, the statutes that came out have seriously hamstrung them. In order for any change like the one you went through, they would, then there was no case for hardship. Uh, hardship basically falls down in the terrain of the, uh, the property itself. Now, you can't get a variance for anything unless you have a legitimate hardship. Um, you're on a rock ledge, there's nowhere else to put this building. Um, it's, it won't happen, basically. It cannot happen because.
The main reason for a CBA always has been, should have been, the regulation that it has to be a hardship. And, and that's, that's always been the, you know.
That's always what it was.
You can't change it from CBA for, for convenience sake.
Very recently, the state, there were some court orders that came out, court decisions that hardship must, is, is, is next to impossible to prove. Um, prime example, look at Grayden Carter's thing. They want to do an expansion of that. They could not do it because there's no hardship. Impact can be minimal, but there's still, there's no hardship. It's buyer's remorse, basically.
May I make a recommend, may I make a recommendation? I, I think, I think the change of that actually is going to apply to very few situations. I can't see that you have many of these, but if we do have them, they will no longer have to go to CBA. They cannot be handled by zoning directly. Is, is, am I correct in that, uh, John?
Well, they, they would first come to me and they would be denied. They can't do it. Um, then they could go to ZBA and they would definitely be denied. They're not gonna get any change of the use besides the existing one they have.
But, because that's no longer.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is.
Peter, yes, this will give, will grant anyone the conforming area of any non-conforming barn within the, the legal setbacks to change the use from a storage purpose to, you know, to utilize. Yeah, that would just basically give me the authority to sign off.
So it's no longer considered a hardship to have a, a 200 year old building built, uh, within the setback?
No, it is not. That's buyer's remorse.
That port, the portion of the building is not, that, that portion of the building is not to be at, uh.
Uh, yeah, no, I understand. Hey, that's, Peter, that explains it to me. I mean, you know, the, the thing is the state changed. So this is the town has changed it something.
Bob, you're absolutely right. The state changed everything. ZBA has really no need to exist anymore.
That, that, and that's what, listening to you is, that's exactly what it sounds like to me. But I still, uh, take a look at 5.2.1 too. I mean, I'm not, I don't understand why that is combined. It's, it's combined, an additional language combined with an interior, with a, um,
Okay. We threw that in there because we just wanted to ensure, uh, when you, we're looking at one word building. Basically. So now when you're building something, this explains the interior modifications. You're building on the inside. It's really just, um, to catch interior mods. Otherwise you could do any mods to it.
Actually, John, could, could we, could we not, um, I think what, what Bob is saying is, it makes reference to shall be built.
Yeah.
Rather than shall be renovated or, or amended or changed, you know, to, you know, I mean, we're talking about it. If you build a new building, uh, a new barn, you wouldn't, you wouldn't build it in, in the setbacks.
Exactly. But if you have a non-conforming barn and you're doing construction on the inside, Bob, would you be building a bathroom in there?
Yeah. So, so that's what, that's what Bill made.
Is in there.
That's what Bill makes reference to, not, not.
Yeah, well, but, yeah, I mean, it just says, no accessory building shall be built within the 50 feet of the street, um, or property line.
The interior construction is to be in conjunction with zoning regulations 3.10.7. Interior construction is the part, the key part that is included in the red letter.
Yeah, it says, it says unless the interior construction is to be in conjunction with, uh, with zoning regulation.
That's what we want to add, just the interior construction. The rest.
So no, no additional square footage is allowed to be added on to that conforming section.
Correct, correct, correct.
So John, given the example that you gave, right, an 80 foot barn, setback 30 feet, they wanna, they've got 20 feet of the barn that's within the non-conforming, right?
Uh, 30, but yeah.
Okay, so they could, they could make 50, 60 feet.
Non-conforming use, correct.
Conforming. Would this allow them to change the entrance to the barn? Say the, the entrance to the barn was on the conforming side, but now they, they need to use the barn area.
Modifications of that would have to be on the conforming side because obviously you can't have the entrance in a non-conforming side, then be using as non-conforming use. The, the entrance would have to be in the conforming area of the building, of the building.
So there will be the side, the sidelines, uh, both sides and rear, and rear property that, uh, that is outside of the setback. Correct. Required setback area.
Anything in the conforming area, you have the right to. You can't make it bigger, but windows, doors.
You can customize. So what about if, if it's the side that is facing the road and you wanted to put a couple of windows in?
Windows are not an issue. With, windows, but I mean, windows, you have the affidavit that'll be in there, state, with statement of use affidavit, that that portion of the non-conforming barn cannot be used. The purpose cannot be changed.
So, so I'm gonna make just one, I'd like to make one comment.
I, I don't think he answered my question though, or there's a misunderstanding. So you're saying that the part that's in non-conforming, the part that's against the street, could be used for a barn?
It's correct.
Okay.
Change.
Okay, but if the door to the barn was in the conforming side, they're now using that as an interior, they're turning it into a house. How would they access the barn?
From the conforming side.
They're gonna bring the animal through the house?
Because then you, you'd use as basic living space. That would be a hallway. That would be.
But then they would have.
That would not work.
We had just asked, add to that, that, that would be a, an architectural situation. I know they have to decide in one, in, in some way where you would have to actually, uh, partition off the area that enters into the non-conforming, or sort of not conforming area of that, of that building.
Correct. An affidavit stating that they could never go utilize that portion of the building in a new manner.
But there's no reason why they can't use conforming area as part of the barn. If they decide it in the way it's necessary to make access to a non-conforming area. Correct?
I think, I think, uh, Deidre, correct me if I'm wrong. I think what she's saying though is, let's say that the non-conforming portion of the barn doesn't have an entrance door.
Yeah.
And they keep goats in there presently, but the conforming portion's gonna be turned into a house. And the, normally those goats would have come through that, what is now going to be living space. Can a door put, be put on to the non-conformity so that that barn can still be?
No, no, but you can't put that door in the, in the conform, in the conforming area and it's gonna be a matter of interior partitioning and layout of, of the building. You can certainly, in that conforming area, you certainly can separate the entrance to a barn section or to a non-conforming area uh, by simply architecture designing it that way. You just lay it out, you have to partition it off. You know, I'm, I'm not saying that I would want that. You know, I would kind of hate to, you know, watch television, see a cow's walk, hearing cows walking in, in next door. But anyway, that, that's an architectural issue. So, I mean, I do understand what it says and I'm with Bob that, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's just like a one size fits all situation and it's not going to happen very often. I can't see this, I'm not gonna see this happening very often and very frequently. But what it did is eliminated, eliminated to go to the zoning board of appeals, uh, to make that change, as Bob pointed out earlier.
It would never happen through zoning board of appeals. The only option is for us to change the regs for something like that.
Yeah, I, I, I honestly had no idea that, uh, the ZBA had lost all their power.
Yeah, they, I mean, honestly, Bob, it's gone. Without hardship, you can talk to anyone on that commission, um, without a hardship, you're done. Talk, I mean, Gail, it's, it's all over. Every town is going through the same concerns.
Well, they weren't hardship. That's the issue. The issue is what is hardship? And it isn't, uh, for convenience sake, it isn't for, it's very difficult to actually prove hardship as, I, I, I think I could probably logically tell you what it is, but from a, from a state point of view, from a regulatory point of view, from a law point of view, uh, you know.
Strictly terrain.
Yeah, there's.
It didn't use.
There's no, there's just no flexibility.
Chris and I went to this winter house through ZBA and we, um, we never would have gotten out. No way.
And of course, just for the record, of course, uh, John Cody is the, uh, zoning enforcement officer town of Roxbury. Just for the record on the, uh, and we appreciate, we appreciate your getting on and giving us that input because that kind of, from my perspective, it solves it for me. I don't agree with the whole concept of removing more and more authority from local uh, land use activities and having it go to, onto a state level. But that's the only way we can actually retain some sort of approval process on a situation like this.
Well, enjoy the moment. Peter, enjoy the moment because I, I should tell everyone, you guys should look at desegregate Connecticut. It's a proposal by the state. It is what.
No, I, I, I read it. I've, you know, I've, I've seen it all and it's, there's more, more of that type of restructuring of statutes and regulations coming down the pike. So I, I know it's happening. And so from our point of view, as far as, uh, the, uh, zoning commission making this tax amendment, I would, uh, I would like to get a, I would suggest that we simply approve, from our perspective, that it, it fits in with our plan of conservation development and has no issue, uh, with the planning commission. Is that something that the, the commission would like to consider?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, can I, can I make a motion that we respond in the affirmative uh, to this particular tax change amendment? And, um, uh, and if I hear a second on that, I would appreciate it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we did that. That was really great. Okay, well, since, um, we don't have anything else on the agenda, there's no chairman's report or no communications that I have to advise you of. Uh, I want to just, uh, uh, say that I appreciate everyone appearing tonight and, um, like, good to see you, Bob, and, um, and be fun. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered. Everyone, thanks very much.
Well, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.